Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, we have met our quorum requirements. So we may begin. We will open with the pledge of allegiance. There are two flags. Please rise, put your hand over your heart, stand straight, face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which serves one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation given by Matt Wigden of the First Baptist Church.
Gracious God, as we draw together for the annual town meeting, we do so with gratitude for the daily gifts we experience, the gift of life, the gift of nature, the gift of our town and the ability to meet together and carry out our civic responsibility. So as we come together, we acknowledge the deep fracturedness that is being experienced throughout our world, and we pray for healing and unity. We pray that throughout our world, peace and flourishing would prevail in the midst of many troubling situations. While our focus is tonight on our town, may we continually recall our place within the global community and our responsibility to those who've gone before us, paving the way for the freedoms and resources that we all enjoy. May we remember our place in the global community and the future generations, and they give us a sense of humility and sobriety as we go about our work tonight. And so as we begin our meeting, we pray for wisdom and charity and insight as we seek to address the issues of our town. May our actions and work prove us to be faithful stewards of the resources, time, and people with which we have been entrusted, in God's name.
Thank you, Matt. I will entertain a motion to omit the reading of the articles in the warrant. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries. The clerk will please read the officer's return on the warrant.
I, Michael J. Foot, constable for the town of Rockport, have on this date, January 3rd, 2023, posted the special town meeting warrant for the special town meeting to be held Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, at 5:30 PM at the Rockport High School, in the two post offices, the town bulletin board, and 17 other public places throughout the town, including three in precinct one, three in precinct two, and three in precinct three. Signed, Michael J. Foot, constable of the town of Rockport. Received 3:00 PM on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, Melanie J. Waddell, town clerk.
Good evening. This meeting tonight will be conducted in accordance with parliamentary procedure as described in Chapter 2 of our Town Bylaws and Robert's Rules of Order, as interpreted by a book called Town Meeting Time. A procedural note. A citizen posed an inquiry through council that this meeting should be postponed because it was alleged not to be in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, in that these zoning articles went before a previous board within the past two years. In fact, it was last May. And our town council, Amy Quessell, who is seated to my left, analyzed this issue and determined that this meeting can go forward. So here we are this evening. I've looked at the articles. They're kind of all related, and logically, they need to go one after the other, so we will go in order. There is no mandatory shutdown time, so we'll hopefully finish this up tonight, and if not, we will have to have a date certain to complete this in the spring. It will likely be April Fool's Day, the date of the spring town meeting. You all should have your voting clickers, and you will have ample opportunity to use them this evening. Before we do, our first question will test them, but it will always be the same. One will be for yes, or A, and two will be for no. There are some little instructions there. We'll give you 12 seconds. Once I tell you it is time to vote, you can press the darn buttons as many times as you want. Your vote will only be recorded one time. Our world is changing, and it appears sometimes that people are less civil one to the other. But I've always looked at town meeting attendees as an exception to that rule, and I'm thankful that you all care enough about this town to come, and I think that's what binds us together. But I would remind you that you must be civil this evening. There'll be no personal attacks, there'll be no shouting, no histrionics. As you can hear from the logistics and the sound here, it's not the easiest place to conduct a meeting, and so if we don't do it orderly, we're going to have problems. So I know zoning is exciting, but keep it down. I've been told that there is coffee and doughnuts in the cafeteria, and thanks to Brothers Brew I have more. As you know, the subject of discussion is always going to be a pending motion and not the warrant article itself. The planning board chairman, Jason Shaw, is our main town committee person presenting today. The zoning board may have some involvement. We have the building inspector with us, we have the finance committee with us, and we have many other boards and committees here this evening. Once we pose a question, if you wish to speak, please get my attention by raising your hand. I'll be looking for people. Melanie will be looking for people. Courtney will also be looking for people, and we'll hear from everybody who wants to speak. There's a microphone there. I don't think we have microphone runners this evening, but it's okay to stand up behind a microphone in the back, and we'll hear from everybody. Make sure that you give us your name and the first time you speak, your address. Address all questions through the chair. And we can't have conversations, so if you ask a question and it calls for an answer and we get you an answer, that doesn't mean you'll be allowed to ask a second question. I know you want to, but we still have at least 150 people here, and I want to hear from as many people as possible, and so that's just how it goes. As the bylaw provides, I will give preference for people who have not yet spoken on an issue before calling on someone a second and third time. So again, we're trying to hear from everybody. When I sense you're ready to vote, I will state the question. I'll paraphrase the motion. You can only be recognized after that time to ask if you have a doubt on what the question is, or you don't know what a yes or no vote is. Once the voting has begun, discussions are out of order. If you want to move the question, that's not something that you can just shout out. You need to be recognized, and once that is done, that requires a two-thirds vote. We're guests of the school department, so no smoking, no dirty words. Behave well. I think we're ready to go. Mitch?
Mr. Moderator, Selectman Chair Ross Brackett moves that the town appropriate and transfer the sum set forth into January 18th, 2023, Special Town Meeting Voters booklet for Article A, on page 3, all for the purpose of paying unpaid bills and adjustments from the previous fiscal year. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. You should all have a Special Town Meeting Voters booklet, and there is a table of contents on page 1 that will tell you where to go for any particular article. A has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, we'll try the clicker just to make sure you're comfortable with It appears that that motion carries 97% in favor and 3% opposed. 129 in favor and four opposed. Ignore the fact that that doesn't equal at least 150. We move on to Article B.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee Chair Dwight Valentine moves that the town amend the votes taken under Articles 5, 5A, 5B, 5C, 6, 6A, and/or 6B of the April 2nd, 2022 annual town meeting by transferring the sum set forth in the January 18th, 2023 Special Town Meeting Voters booklet for Article B, motion on page 3, and the amounts and for the purposes specified therein. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Brazen theft of our monitor. Okay. If you are in favor, press 1 or A. If you are opposed, press 2 or B. Oh.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street, point of order. Are we saying that the quorum is only required for attendance for a vote to go forward? Or are we saying that the quorum is required for an individual vote? Because the total number added to did not equal a quorum for the last vote.
That's very good. Yes. Once we have a quorum, then it is presumed we have a quorum until somebody challenges a quorum, and then once you challenge the quorum, then we have to take steps to see if we still have a quorum.
I would respectfully suggest that we did not achieve quorum for the very first vote out of the gate. I challenge whether we have a quorum.
We need three volunteers to count people. If you want to volunteer, come on up.
169 based off the town that we just did.
Okay. We have count of 168 people. So off we go. We were talking, I believe, about Article B. Are there any questions about Article B? We'll just get people going here. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now, I believe, after B, we go to C, but there's no motion on C. So now we go to Article D, and I would like you, if you would, to take a minute on page 4 through 7 of your voters booklet, just peruse that letter that the chair, Jason Shaw, wrote, if you haven't done so already. I'll give you a moment to do that, and then we'll get through... We'll go to Article D and get through what we can get through. Mitch, we'll hear from you, and followed by, I believe, Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article D be approved as printed in the January 18th, 2023 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct capitalization and typographical errors, as well as conform numerals, written numbers, and sections throughout this article to ensure correctness when amending the zoning bylaws. Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support this article.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, and this will require, as will, I think, the rest of the this evening, a two-thirds vote.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Try to move through this as quickly as things allow. But before I begin on Article D, I just want to address something that was discussed earlier by town council, and that's the... How we got here today with these amendments. Some of you may know that many of the amendments that are here today, many of the articles, were also part of the town meeting back in May of 2022. And that was, at that meeting, all of the articles here, there were, I think there are 15 here, but give or take a few, were all combined into one, which was in Article B. And that was, with hindsight, that was a mistake. It was confusing to people. It was a lot for them to take under consideration. So Article B in May of 2022 did not receive the two-thirds majority that it needed to receive to be adopted. So since that time, what we did is we went back, the planning board, went back to the drawing board, and we decided we would review this one article and break it up into several parts, which is what we've done tonight. And what we did back in October 4 of 2022, we held what would be a second public, duly noticed public hearing on the provisions that are now before you. So in other words, these were... The majority of these were part of a public hearing back in January of 2022, and they were again subject of a duly noticed public hearing in October of 2022, this last October. And after that public hearing, the second one, on behalf of the planning board, I wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen, and in that letter, I stated as follows, and this is important because we basically show that we are continuing to want to get these articles adopted. And I'll read from the last paragraph of this letter, October 6. "The October 4 public hearing was sparsely attended by members of the public. Most of those in attendance were Rockport public officials. The public hearing was closed within an hour from when it began. And then finally, the planning board voted unanimously on October 4 to refer these proposed bylaws to the Board of Selectmen so they could include it in a warrant and bring it to a vote at a special town meeting as soon as practicable." And that's what we're doing tonight. The planning board unanimously moves that these articles be considered tonight in their present form before you folks as the public. So that being said, let's go to Article D. I think Article D should be a pretty quick description or explanation. This is... There are no substantive changes in Article D. This is simply a renumbering and reordering of sections. That's all this does, and this is so we can have a more coherent zoning bylaw, because every time we add or take things out, sections get changed. So this is simply a renumbering section, and it allows us to basically change the table of contents to reflect what we would have now in the zoning bylaw. And that's it. I hope there aren't any questions, because I probably can't answer them about this. It's very, very technical, but I can assure you that Article D has no change that would affect substantively any zoning provision.
All right. You've heard the motion. Any questions? Yes. Gentlemen in the back who looks like Toby. Oh, it is Toby.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Brannan Street. I move to remove L. Water Supply Protection Overlay District from Section Roman numeral 8 and establish it as a separate section, Roman numeral 15, and renumber the existing section 15 as 16. This is on page 2 of the warrant. A table of contents, if you're going to go in for one, which is what we have here, makes a difference. It's how you find things. It ought to make sense. It makes no sense at all to call the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, which is a separate overlay district, as the name tells you, part of the special regulations where it's been landed here. It was a separate section before. It should be a separate section now. It doesn't help to confuse matters. The whole point of having run over the whole thing again was to end up with some clarity. And I should remark that the zoning code is not for the benefit of... Am I speaking too loudly?
No. You're fine, Toby. I'm just asking the sound engineers to lower the sound a little bit.
The zoning code is not the exclusive province or the benefit of the planning board, the Board of Appeals, and Sharp Developers. It belongs to all of us, and you should be able to readily find the things that you wish to find. A watershed protection overlay district is not a special regulation. It's a separate district. The amendment is harmless and sets things right. Consider voting for it.
Okay. You've heard the motion to amend. Now that's what we're going to talk about, so the only thing I want to hear from you about is that amendment, moving that section and giving it its own section. So if you want to talk about that, great. Otherwise, hold off.
Just one quick question. These changes are going to...
All right. Please just state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Daniel O'Donnell, 52 Main Street. These changes get recorded down at Town Hall?
Yes, it becomes part of our Code of Zoning Bylaws. After approval by the Attorney General, and then it does. Okay. You've heard the motion to move that section and create its own section. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, press 1 or A, and if you're opposed to that, press 2 or B, starting And I think that needs a majority, the amendment, so it passes 68% to 32%, or 97 to 46. And again, some people aren't voting. They're out. They're going to the bathroom. They're having the wonderful coffee and munchkins, so that's what we have. So now, we go back to D as amended. Any discussion about that? All right. You've heard that motion. Now as amended. All those in favor, press 1 or A, and if you're opposed, press 2 or B, and this needs two-thirds, starting now. A. And if you're opposed, press 2 or B. And this needs two-thirds, starting now. Okay. This passes 90%. It's greater than 66 and 666%, and it's 137 to 15. So we're done with D. Off we go. We'll be home watching Netflix in no time.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article E be approved as printed in the January 18th, 2023 Special Town Meeting warrant and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct capitalization and typographical errors as well as conform numerals, written numbers, and sections throughout this article to ensure correctness when amending the zoning bylaws. Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support this article.
Moved and seconded. Jason, anything on this one?
Yeah, could I have the PowerPoint? Article D is a rewrite of the statement of purpose. The statement of purpose is a preamble, if you will, to the zoning law. It doesn't have any enforcement power on its own. It doesn't have any substantive provisions. It just kind of states the general principles that are behind the zoning that is for the town of Rockport. This was, this language was provided by our consultant, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that does lots and lots of zoning provisions for other communities such as Rockport. It's simply a more up-to-date, detailed preamble than what exists now. As you can see, the existing part is the part that's crossed out. It's quite a bit shorter. This is longer and more detailed and just generally describes what the goals are for the zoning in the town of Rockport. Again, there are no substantive changes to the zoning. It simply is a preamble to what's to come in the rest of the zoning. That's all I have, Mr. Moderator, on this article.
Okay, thank you. Okay. You have heard the motion. Any comments? Oh, the gentleman in the back. Toby.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. "The purpose of zoning in one sentence is to define property rights. If you want something more elaborate, the purpose of zoning is to define property rights, to protect property values, to protect the environment, to secure the common good, and to protect you from your neighbor and your neighbor from you. Now, we can't say that. That's not sufficiently pompous or legalese. But as for what's offered here, we would do much better to stick with what we have, which is brief and modest and rather to the point. The only thing wrong with the paragraph at the bottom, which the Planning Board wishes to pitch out the window, is the word morals. Zoning doesn't have anything to do with morals. We all have morals enough at home and don't need to sprinkle them on the zoning. What's proposed here is pretentious and overreaching, and there are also portions of it that are not honest and others that are not accurate. It is simply not honest to say, 'We are doing this to', and these are the words, 'to prevent the overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population.' That is not where the Planning Board has been leading us or wishes to lead us. So that's not the truth. And the section that says, 'To facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements,' all of those are indeed important public concerns. They're not concerns of zoning. And then, at the end, 'The making of Rockport a more viable and more pleasing place to live, work, and play.' Well, we're in a school. Children. Play is indeed important for children and perhaps for adults as well. But again, it's not the subject of zoning. All of this is pretentious and high-flown, and we'd do much better to stick with what we have, just though no."
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Jamie Medea, 2 Holbrook Court. Usually I can't come because these are Monday nights when I teach land use law. I would like to observe personal perspective that this purpose statement is quite different from the one that's here now. It adds things that I have relied on in my own practice, such as to provide adequate light and air and to prevent the overcrowding of land. So specifically just for this purpose, this one singular vote, I am voting yes because it includes those two things that I intend to use to challenge other things that do not do that. Thank you very much, and thank you for your work.
All right. Anybody else want to talk about the preamble here, whether it should be moral or otherwise?
Um, this is the same preamble that went through two public hearings, one back in, as I mentioned, January of 2022, and most recently, October of 2022. There was not a peep from anybody about any of these, but let's just look at them really. I didn't want to spend a lot of time talking about these, but look at them in relation to what we want. Promote health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Rockport. That's a goal. To lessen congestion in the streets, to conserve health, to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. That's a goal. To provide adequate light and air, as the lady who just got up and spoke, that's a goal. To prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population. That's a goal. To encourage housing for persons of all income levels. That's a goal, and it's one we've talked about a lot in the town. To facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements, to protect and preserve open space as a natural resource. Anybody doubt that that's a goal? For the conservation of natural conditions for flora and fauna, and to serve as an amenity for scenic and aesthetic enjoyment and recreational use. To conserve the value of land and buildings, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. That's a goal. To achieve optimum environmental quality through review and cooperation by the use of incentives, bonuses, and design review. That's a goal. And to preserve and increase its amenities and to encourage an orderly expansion of the tax base by utilization, development, and redevelopment of land. These are all goals. No one can deny that. And they're more specific, and they pertain to our town, and that's why it was changed and changed without objection during two public hearings. So as I said before, this is preamble, but doesn't this state what I believe everyone in the town would want to see for the town? Doesn't this language reflect that? Is there something about one of these statements in here that is inaccurate or wrong or contrary to what people believe? I submit no, and ask that you vote in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Remember, we're talking about just the purpose. I sense that you are ready to vote. All those in favor of changing the purpose, press 1. And if you're opposed, press 2. Didn't see it? Do you have a point you want to make? Go get behind the microphone, please. Again, we're just talking about the preamble.
Thank you. John Kulikowski, 5 Phillips Avenue. Two things. One is, there's so many lofty statements in this goal. You could justify just about anything. You could justify taking someone's property. You could do almost anything with all these lofty thoughts. It's, to me, it's just opening up a can of worms to allow almost anything if the right people speak and support it. So I think the more, the original one was a much better general purpose. This just opens up all sorts of options that could be used against individuals in the town. It sounds very lofty, but when you step back and look at it, it could be used for just about any cause possible. So I'm sort of against that. Now, this was voted against, was it not, on the last town meeting concerning this? Was this voted down? Yes or no?
We're not going to have a conversation about it, but the whole...
Well, it was voted down. So why are we doing this again? I don't understand all these, why we're repeating everything again when it was voted down before.
Jason, may I? Yeah, that, at the outset of this, we went over whether we're authorized or lawful to do this as a redo. Obviously, it didn't pass the first time. If you're not in favor of it, at least now, it's more of a poo-poo platter approach. You get to choose between many different things where it was presented all as one option. If people don't like it, if it doesn't pass by two-thirds, any one of these particular articles, it doesn't pass. But we are doing it, and that's why we're here. Thank you. Anything further? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Amy Seabrook, and I live at 7 Broadway. So I think there's a purpose to this preamble, and I think that because we are facing a catastrophic climate situation that we are fraught with this. Some of us in this auditorium may think we are divided by different, even opposite, ideas about how to move forward together. After all, we are taking a yes or no vote. I offer that if I vote yes and you vote no, we still have 98% commonality in our general thinking about our general welfare as a town. We all want the town better going into the future. We know that better cannot mean only single-family vacation homes, because goals to maintain schools and community year-round won't permit that. Better also cannot mean that we create big, ugly parking garage monstrosities and huge low-income buildings. Regardless of how we vote today, we are in 98% agreement, I suggest. We want to be in a livable place and keep it livable. I propose that we take a breath or two to begin or continue the recognition of this town as a group of acquaintances with a common goal of retaining our beautiful living town and creating details in a more common vision than we might think possible now. For instance, we don't need to accept any ugly plan put in front of us. We could ask for more open meetings, and we could design our way forward together.
As I said at the outset, we're all here because we love the town, and I love all of you because you love the town enough to come here. And we don't have to agree on anything, but we have to respect one another and do what we believe is in the best interest of the town. So thank you for saying that. I think we're ready to vote on this. 1 is going to mean A, and 2, or 1 is, 1 or A means yes. 2 or B means no. This has to pass by two-thirds, starting now. So, that did not pass. Does not look to me. What's the vote number? 101?
60.
Okay. We move on. See how fun this is?
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article F be approved as printed in the January 18th, 2023 Special Town Meeting warrant and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct capitalization and typographical errors as well as conform numerals, written numbers, and sections throughout this article to ensure correctness when amending the zoning bylaws. Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support this article.
Moved and seconded. Jason?
Yeah, could you put up the PowerPoint, please? Okay, Article F. What this is, is a definitions update. There are numerous, the board with, working with, the Planning Board, working with its consultants, MAPC, found numerous additions and deletions to update the definitions. Article F does not create any uses that do not exist already, but some of the definitions needed to be changed. For example, some of them were archaic. They were outmoded. They're not used anymore. For example, cottage colonies, which was in the definitions, is something that in this era is not referenced anymore. There are other things like boarding houses, for example, are not referenced anymore in Others, such as a garden utility shed, is in the definitions, but it's not in the body of the zoning law anywhere. And in fact, a garden utility shed falls under what is called an accessory structure, which is in the zoning. Other definitions, like half-story, contain dimensional requirements. They were simply moved to different sections of the bylaw, to the area and dimensions bylaw. The water supply overlay district definitions were all moved out of the general definitions and moved into the Water Supply Protection Overlay District bylaw. So that's, I mean, there, as you can see from looking at this, from the additions and the deletions, there are, there are quite a few, I'm not going to talk about all of them because it just would take up too much time and probably not be of tremendous interest to people. So that's what we, that's what the Planning Board attempted to accomplish in this particular Article F, is to reconfigure the definitions, modernize the definitions, and make it a more coherent zoning bylaw than it is now.
And these are on pages 19 to 29 in your voter booklet. All right. Anybody want to discuss these? Anybody other than that gentleman? Yes. We'll get to everybody, not to worry. Go ahead, Alan.
You want to use this microphone? Yeah, go ahead.
And the definitions. First of all, Alan Battistelli, 57 Phillips Avenue, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals received this in December. We don't have a meeting during Christmas that week, so we, our next meeting is January. So there's no official position for the Board, but there's definitely a consensus that the Planning Board has done a lot of work here, and whether the overreach or whatever, I... And whether the overreach or, or whatever, I, I really want to commend these people for how much time they put into it. And, and I think they really have tried to do a whole lot of work. Should they do it all, all in one year? That's not tonight's subject. So when I speak, I would be speaking on my own behalf on two different definitions. My first definition would be the definition of an inn. I happen to be an innkeeper in Rockport. There's been discussion between different innkeepers in Rockport. In the definition, I would, I would rec, I would vote to change the definition, not to change the definition, I would vote no on that one, and stick with the definition as it is. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you why if that's okay. Is that okay, Mr. Moderator?
Oh, it certainly is, Mr. Innkeeper.
Okay. Thank you. The existing inns, it's a license. So if you change the definition of an inn, it won't make any difference to all those people that are already licensed. With your license, you'll be grandfathered and be able to go by the old definition. Okay? So whether this gets approved or not approved, what I don't like is that, I don't think there's a whole line of people who are coming, the Hampton Inns and, and different, different inns who are going to be coming to Rockport very soon. We don't have that much land. So the demand has been, as far as, the 28 years that I've been on the Board of Appeals, we've had very few, no, I don't recall any new inns coming our way, and I do remember five inns disappearing. But any, all existing inns would be working under the old definition, and so if we're going to be working on the old definition, I would rather see the old definition than see a new definition that if a butter or somebody wants to look up and say, well, is that operating properly or not? They'll be looking at the wrong information unless they call Paul and someone goes and says, well, when, when were you licensed? And, and looking back in time, it'll be invisible. So I would vote no on the change of definition at an inn. Certainly, anything I, the two things I, I speak on, the second, one, can I go to the second, or not?
Why don't we vote on the first one?
Sure.
So I'm taking what you said as an amendment to this series of definitions to revert the definition of an inn to what it was before, which is a building erected for or used for paying guests, permanent or transient, where over six, count them, six bedrooms are used for each purpose. So now we're going to only talk about the amendment. Very exciting. Jason, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, I would, because, you know, we, Alan and I and a few other people had a meeting a few weeks ago, and although I didn't expect an amendment, Alan did raise this as a concern, because just in the interest, I think, of full disclosure, Alan Battistelli is the owner of an inn, I understand, and he's an innkeeper, and he was also the owner of an inn that was the subject of litigation in the town for a while, which, on which apparently he prevailed. And one of the, the language that allowed him to prevail to have an inn where people just stayed indefinitely was the permanent or transient aspect, which is in the current language, which is basically allowing, when you say transient, meaning someone can essentially live there indefinitely, which, if that's what the town wants for its inns in the future, then that's okay. But the definition that was, that has been proposed, which is really one that's been used in other communities too, is simply in which there are guest rooms used for the purpose of offering public lodging on a day-by-day basis, including a bed and breakfast home. So it kind of, it changes the quality of what is an inn for the future, for anybody who might decide to open one, for something that could be, in a sense, transient housing or apartments, to what I think most people think of as an inn, which is you call, you make a reservation, you go there, you stay for a few days, and you leave. And that's, that's what this definition is meant to do, is to put to bed what an inn is in the town of Rockport going forward. And as Mr. Battistelli correctly stated, it doesn't affect the current inns or the current owners of inns, because they're, they're there, they're grandfathered, but it would affect any future inns or any building conversions that might become inns in the future. That this is, this is what we believe that the town of Rockport wants for inns, is what we all think of, is you make a reservation, you stay for a few days, and you leave. The other aspect of it, of remaining, that could be something else. You could call it something else, but maybe not an inn. So hence, that's why we think this definition should remain.
Anyone else wanting to talk about inns only at this point? Yes. And then just get behind the microphone there, we'll hear from everybody. You can all be part of the inn crowd.
Gosh, thanks. Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. With regards to this definitional change, I noticed that we've removed all language specifying a minimum occupancy or minimum capacity of six bedrooms. What I'd like to know is what is the intention of the zoning board or the planning board with regards to how this adoption will affect the number of investors we've had coming into our community and making it available via the various online rental tools, such as Airbnb? Is this intended to increase our tax base? What's the net benefit of changing these rules, aside from getting rid of something that could ostensibly be considered low-income housing for our transient or non-permanently-housed population? Thank you.
Anyone?
I don't know how to answer that. I mean, we're, we're looking at it pretty straightforward. An inn is an inn. An inn is a place that people make reservations. There's no ulterior motive here for anything. That's, if that's, if that's your question, I'm not sure, but that's what it is. This is a definition that's in use in other communities. It's non-controversial, and it describes the use.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Kalandra Salo, 45 Stockholm Avenue. He kind of started my point. In this time when we are so, we're supposed to be concerned about unhoused people or people not being able to afford housing, I could kind of care less if, you know, the person's making a day-to-day reservation, or, I mean, it's very common that people stay in hotels and, and pay to stay in hotels as opposed to getting in apartments. And, you know, in this day and age where people are desperate for housing, I understand the definition of an inn, you want it to be day-by-day reservation, but if we're supposed to be an open community, I could care less if somebody is transient. If they have a place to stay, they can afford it, a roof over their head. I don't know. I just think it's, I think it's kind of going in the opposite direction of what we're supposed to be going as a community. And, and what do we consider transient? What's, what does that person look like? When we say, do we want that? Are you saying we don't want that transient person? Well, what does that transient person look like?
Jason?
I think, I think, yeah.
Let's, maybe, Jason, it may be more efficient if we get a few people and then you respond. Yes, ma'am.
Laurie McKenna, 31 High Street. So let's say that this change in definition passes, so with a new definition of an inn, but I decide I want to have the same situation as Alan has. I want to have some kind of rooming house. Where would that fall in the definitions going forward, and would I be allowed to do it?
All right. Anybody else have any other questions about this, and then we'll get an answer, and we can move on to the next definition.
Hi, Laura Evans, 77 High Street. I think if we go back to the old definition of inn as Mr. Battistelli is proposing, then we would need to add definitions for Airbnb and bed and breakfast. The whole short-term rental issue is going to come up again with the additional dwelling units, which now have a six-month rental period assigned to them. So I think this whole issue of what is a short-term rental is, is really important in considering this question. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Sarah Clark, 10 Milbrook Park. I just want to add a little history. My mother ran a small boarding house in the middle of the century, and I took it over at one point. We, I had like three or four people often boarding in the house, and it provided income so my mother could continue to live in the house, so I could. And it also provided housing for people who didn't have enough money to have an apartment in town. Some of them were a little odd, some of them were just very nice people. That's it. Wherever you're living, that happens. But I think it's good for people to be able to have boarding houses still. I don't think we should eliminate that.
Anybody else? Let's respond to those, and then we can vote on this.
Responding to the, the need for housing, yeah. And it's funny, it's kind of, it's strange, because that's one of the things that the Planning Board has been really pushing, and getting a lot of pushback on. As you know, last May, some of you, we had a accessory dwelling unit provision that made it easier for homeowners to rent spaces in their houses or, or convert garages to rent to people who couldn't afford a whole house. And that passed by two votes. So when I hear people talking about the need for affordable housing, we get that, and we're trying to do that. But let's talk about what an inn is. An inn shouldn't be something that, other than a place where people stay on a temporary basis. We're not going to allow inns to be occupied on kind of a haphazard way, depending on how, whether someone wants to stay there a month, two months, three months. That's not an inn anymore. That's, that's like an apartment. It's, it's not something where you make reservations and go stay. That's what this definition is. We have lots of other housing initiatives where we want to allow people in Rockport to live who can't afford what Rockport is now. We have multifamily housing, which you'll hear later today. We have the accessory dwelling units, which can now be obtained way simpler than they were before, simply by going to the building inspector and getting a building permit, and you can have an accessory dwelling unit. We get that. But for an inn, let's call an inn what an inn is. It's not housing for people to live for, on long-term basis. It is exactly what it is. For reservations, you come there, you stay, and then you leave. And whether you're staying for a month or two weeks or whatever, that's the intent of this law. Thank you.
We just got an inn license, so we can stay here as long as we want to finish this I kind of think we're ready to vote. You okay with that, Alan? Wicked quick.
You know, Erin and I are quite proud of, Erin's still over here with her mask on, she's got a cold. But we're quite proud of the fact that we're providing housing for people. We have people, some of them have money. We have a guy who's, is a millionaire, and he just does not want to own a house, and he, and he likes to stay there. Most of, many, many of our people, someone said, yeah, they would absolutely qualify for affordable housing. They're lower-income people, some of them. Really nice. By nine o'clock at night, that place is quiet as can be. This is not Airbnb. A definition of an inn is, an inn can be, the definition existing today, unless we change it tonight, will, is, is transient or permanent. So the inn can go by the day, by the night. Many of the inns in Rockport will take, in the wintertime, they'll fill their rooms with people for the whole winter. Schoolteacher, somebody, they have to get out by spring because they can get the big money per night. But if we're doing $50 a night, or $40 a night, with, with somebody who's, they are, these are all guests, okay? You know, at a lease, there's no, there's no tenants here at, at our extended stay-in. Many, many Hampton Inn has stay, has stay-ins. But it is a great form of housing, and, and I get approached by some of these Rockporters who live there, families, you'd recognize all these names, you won't go into it, who live there, who say, I, I should have, this is a fantastic place. It's so quiet, and they, and this is their home. They, they live there, they pay a daily basis for the whole year. And so, and I have transit, but we can go daily still, we still can go daily. The definition is completely wide open, so the existing innkeepers have flexibility.
Thank you for that wicked fast exposition. I think we're ready to vote.
Well, one, one thing I just want to say, you know, um-
Jason, don't you think we're ready to vote?
I think we're ready to, no, I, I think one, one thing we have to recognize here, this doesn't affect Alan Battistelli's interest in what he's doing in the, in the Cape Hedge Inn, I guess what it's called. It doesn't affect that. It doesn't affect anybody who's operating an existing inn. This is going forward, let's tie an inn to what it should be, and let's meanwhile work for making a more affordable housing in the town in a way that's orderly, that's based on the zoning, and that will provide decent housing for folks. I have no personal interest in any of this. And, you know, it's not me, it's not for me, it's for our community that I'm doing this stuff. I'm a volunteer. I have no financial benefit in the outcome here at all. That's all I have to say.
All right. You've heard the motion. This is to amend Article F to keep the existing definition of an inn as you see it, with, I guess that's line-out, and it's going to take a majority vote to change that definition, and then we'll go through maybe some other specific definitions. If you vote yes, you're voting to accept your amendment, which is to change the definition back to what it was before. And if you vote no, then you're, we're keeping the motion as it was drafted. Any other questions on that? All right. Ready? One is to change it, to back to what it was before, and two is to keep it as it exists in this motion. Ready? Go. It appears that that fails 41% to 59%, or 68 votes to 97 votes. So that amendment fails. The inn is now this new definition, and are there any others that we need to go over? Yes, sir, you in the back, who looks like Toby.
Thank you. Toby Arsenio, 95 Granite Street, and you will all end up hating me. I have five changes to offer, but there are a great many definitions, and we only get to do this once, so I guess I don't apologize. For Article F, Section 2, Definitions, Convenience Store, I move to add the word "and" after the words "food items" and delete the words "and limited beer and wine items." This is page 11 of the warrant. And I would ask Town Council to weigh in and tell us, the license for a convenience store, does that give you license to sell beer and wine? And the second question is, if you have a convenience store, are you obliged to sell beer and wine? This is a mistake to add this here, the requirement, or the suggestion even, that you would be selling beer and wine. If you have an inn, you can go to the Board of Selectmen and apply for an alcohol license, not just beer and wine. But to mix it in with the definition of a convenience store is going to create confusion, and it simply is not accurate. You can have a convenience store like the one on Broadway, and that's harmless enough. If it's selling alcohol, it's something- one on Broadway, and that's harmless enough. If it's selling alcohol, it's something else again, and it merely confuses the definition. Please consider it. And there are more to follow.
Okay, this is an easy answer to that statement. It's called read, the, read the definition. "A small retail establishment, including those that may be located within or associated with another use, that offers for sale goods such as prepackaged food items, other household goods, and limited beer and wine items." It's "a small retail establishment, including those that may be located within or associated with another use." It doesn't say it has to offer beer or wine. That's just an example of what could be offered at a convenience store, and maybe in the future in the town of Rockport, that will be allowed in convenience stores. It may not be now, but this definition is not inconsistent with that. That is just saying it may offer for sale prepackaged food, other household goods, and limited beer and wine. It may, or it may not. And right now, unless they're permitted, it's not going to offer beer and wine. But there certainly, as a zoning definition, does not mandate that convenience stores sell beer and wine in the town. But if one of these days they do, like supermarkets in town do now, then we won't have to come back and change the definition later.
If, if you do want to talk, just to speed things up, just get behind the mic, and we'll line up, and we'll hear you out. Yes, ma'am? Calandra, go ahead.
Calandra Salo, 45 Stockholm Ave. On page 21, it's crossed out a dwelling existing at...
Nope, we're only talking about convenience stores.
Oh, okay.
We'll get, we'll get to other things at some point. Sorry.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. I agree with Toby. This is superfluous to the definition of a convenience store. A convenience store need not have an itemized list of what it can sell. It simply needs to be defined as a retail space that offers items for convenient purchase. This listing obfuscates the definition. It's superfluous. Strike it, please.
Anybody else? Okay. Do we need the language, can you guys? Okay, now we are voting on this amendment to change the definition of convenience store. And Toby, correct me if I'm not right here. You want to add the word "and" after the words "food items," and you want to delete the words "and limited beer and wine items." Is that correct? Okay. Anybody have any problem with what that is? So go down to the definition, and he wants to add the word "and" after the word "food item," and he wants to delete the words "and limited beer and wine." That's what we have in, items. That's what we have in front of us. If you are in favor of making that change, press 1 for A. And if you are against making that change, press 2 for B, starting... Yes, you have a question about what this means? Then we're done. There, we're done. We're going to take a vote. If you want to make that change, you're going to press 1 for A, and if you don't want to make that change, you're going to press 2 for B, starting now. Okay, that motion fails 44% in favor, 56% against, 66 in favor, 83 against. Toby, you have others?
For Article F, Section 2, Definitions, I move to retain the definition for garden utility shed. This is on page 12 of the warrant. Jason Shaw says that this is obsolete. That's nonsense. There are garden utility sheds all over town. Unfortunately, they tend to be right up against the neighbor's property, where they should not be. And how that is managed, I can't begin to tell you. Maybe you can look at the building inspector, maybe you look at the Board of Appeals. But if we're throwing this out, we're making a mistake, and rather than throw it out, we should add, you know, a hex on it, or a definition of how far from the boundaries they need to be from the zoning. To simply say that you've solved it with accessory structures, unfortunately, it has not worked. It will do no harm to leave it here, and I say we keep it.
Okay, so you want to restore the definition, I see it on page 21, of garden utility shed, and you want to put a hex on it. Okay.
The reason we're taking out garden utility shed is because it's not mentioned anywhere in the zoning bylaw. It's in the definitions, but never mentioned again in the zoning bylaw anywhere. And as I mentioned earlier, we do have a general definition of an accessory structure, which would cover all kinds of accessory structures, including a garden utility shed. Those are the reasons it was removed.
All right. Anybody else want to talk about garden utility sheds or hexes? All right. You've heard the amendment. If you want to restore garden utility shed to these definitions, even though it's not used anywhere in the zoning bylaws, you're going to press 1 or A, and if you don't, you're going to press 2 or B, starting, and it will require a majority to get it back in there, starting now. Looks like that fails. 29% in favor, 71% opposed, so it will stay out. 42 and 105. Toby, next? We're just going to go through Toby's list, then we'll go through other things. He's got a list. Go ahead, Toby.
Thank you. For Article F, Section 2, Definitions, I move to retain the definition for half-story, following story. This is page 17 of the warrant. I'm referring to the warrant. It seems to be different page numbers now. You'll find that this has migrated elsewhere, Jason is about to tell you, in the zoning, to pages 53 and 56, I believe. But it belongs here as well. The zoning, as I said, is not just for the benefit of the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. If you look things up, you should be able to find a coherent definition. And half-story belongs to the story there, because it is two and a half stories and 30 feet that give you the height regulations. So, and additionally, where they put it, where you'll be told, we'll find it, and you needn't be bothered with this, the footnote that would find you, the definition is missing. Look on pages 53 and 6.
All right, I see it in the voters booklet on page 26. And we could talk about that again, but that'd be another story. Okay. Please.
All right, yeah. One of our, actually, no, two of our members of the Planning Board are registered architects. Peter Cutner and our newest member, Bob Simmons. And when we were revising this, what we did is we took, like, dimensional definitions and moved them from, and moved them into the dimensional sections of, dimensional section of the bylaw, because that's where they belong. It doesn't belong in a standalone definition. It's part of the definition of a story and a half-story, and they're in the dimensional section of the bylaw. So it wasn't eliminated, it was just moved. But we moved it out of the definitions, which was the right thing to do.
By the way, Mr. Simmons, thank you for, you're the latest member of the Planning Board. Thank you for your service, agreeing to serve this town. All right, anybody else want to talk about this? Okay, let's vote on it. If you want to change that definition by restoring the text that's been deleted there on page 26, you're going to vote 1 or A. If you don't, you want to leave it the way the Planning Board changed it, you're going to vote 2 or B. It requires a majority vote, and we are going to start now. Yes. Yes is to accept Toby's amendment, which is to change it back to the way it was. And no is to leave it with the edits as you see it on page, I'm looking at page 26. So if you don't want to accept what Toby said, press 2. And if you want to change it, as Toby suggested, you're going to press 1. Any questions? All right, ready, go. Looks like you're ready. All right, ready, go. Okay, 23% want to change it, and 77% don't. That's not a majority, so that fails. And it was 33 to 110. We move on. Toby, you have any others? Of course you do.
For Article F, Section 2, Definitions, I move to delete the definition for impervious surface. If you turn to impervious surface, you'll see two definitions, which are virtually the same thing, word for word, impermeable surface and impervious surface. And I got in questions to Town Council. I hope we can have them answered. I want to know whether either or both of those include ledge, and whether that would be ledge at the surface or ledge under the surface. And if this strikes you as absurd nitpicking, you should know that the Government and Bylaw Committee is in the process of writing a bylaw dealing with stormwater. And part of that is a suggestion, although not a proposal now, that we have a stormwater utility, in plain English, an enterprise fund. So impervious surfaces would be the basis on which people would be charged, the amount of impervious surfaces on their property. That's not before you tonight, but that's in the offing. This is laying the groundwork. So you need to be sure of the definitions. I hope we can have an answer from Town Council, and I would ask that you delete impervious surfaces. It leaves the other one intact, and they are substantially the same.
Yeah, the reason they're, they're too impermeable and impervious is because, I can't put my finger on it right now, they're used sometimes in different ways in the zoning bylaws, and one may be impervious, and one may be impermeable. They have the same definition, but why not leave them both there, just in case there's any confusion as to the meaning? And that's why they're there, and that's why they're similar.
All right. Anybody else? Back to you, Toby.
Yes, having sat in on the Board of Selectmen's meeting just before this one, Town Council says that, or was it Mitch Viera? Anyway, we were told, the few people in the room, that it's up to the moderator whether Town Council should answer questions or not. I guess I don't feel that way. I feel that, that Town Council should answer the questions, and I want to know about ledge. Is that included in either definition? And as I've said, as things move forward with the stormwater, this just isn't an irrelevant definition. This is going to have consequences. It's going to come back. It's going to bite you.
Toby, you want answers? We've got them.
Thank you, Amy Questle, Town Council, through you, Mr. Moderator. In my opinion, ledge would not be considered, because both definitions state material or structures. I don't consider ledge material or structure, and so therefore I would not think that ledge would count.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, which one of these you want out? Okay. Okay. So if I understand this, that this amendment, if it passes, removes impervious surfaces and its definition. Is that correct? Okay. If you vote 1 or A, you're going to remove that definition. And if you vote 2 or B, you're not going to remove that definition. You're going to leave it as the Planning Board has written it. Any questions about that? All right, starting now. Requires a majority vote. Okay, 30% in favor, 70% opposed. This amendment fails. The numbers are 42 and 99. We move on. Anything else from Toby? Okay. Anybody want to talk about anything else in, any different definitions? Yes, we have several people, yes, sir. Get to everybody. We'll go to you, Charlie, then we'll go to that gentleman, then we'll go to this gentleman.
Thank you. Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. I move that we change the definition of an inn so as to not affect dog owners who own multiple dogs. A lot of people in my neighborhood own three and occasionally four dogs. In fact, I know there's one lady who walks around with, I think, five Chihuahuas on one leash. Why can't we define kennels as an inn for dogs? You know? Double down on the inn thing. We know an inn's an inn.
So was there a reason you didn't get this to us ahead of time?
Dogs. I had to walk them.
Yeah, I'm going to consider that one not in order. Let's move on. Anything else? Yes, sir. Then we'll get to you, Mr. Battistelli.
Larry Salo, 45 Stockholm Ave. I would like to remove, I just lost it, the definition of commercial fertilizer.
All right. Any, any reason why you didn't get this into us beforehand? We have, do have a bylaw that, while not mandatory, it is suggestive, so that we don't have everybody waiting around to run it by Town Council. So any reason why you didn't get that into us before, so we could consider it?
I was delivering your mail.
Good one.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call that one out of order. Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Calandra Salo, 45 Stockholm Ave. He wasn't just delivering mail, he was working almost 10 hours a day, I'm just saying. So my question is, existing dwelling, a dwelling existing at the effective date of the revision of the bylaw in 1976, can you explain why that was taken out and what that originally meant? Page 21.
I think the question is, on page 21, there is a word existing, or definition of existing dwelling, and it seems to be out. So the question is, what's the rationale on that?
Right. So does that mean if he had a house... So does that mean if he had a house built in 1966, you fall under the old bylaws, or...
Yeah, no, we get it, we'll get this for you. Anybody?
Well, I don't know, you know, off the top of my head, I apologize, we've done a lot of revisions, a lot of pages. I do see, just from what it says here, a dwelling existing as the effective date of the revision of the law in 1976? I mean, that, that makes little sense, as I'm reading that right now, it doesn't make much sense to me to be referring to a revision that is, you know, that old. So, but, and the answer, when or why it was removed, it was a while ago, and I don't know why.
And then just last...
No, 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 we have to move on, because we got a lot of people. We had a gentleman up front, Mr. Battistelli.
I'd like to make a motion on, to adjust the way gross floor area, the definition of gross floor area is worked out, to delete the last sentence.
And this one was brought to us before, so it, we've had a chance to contemplate it.
Gross floor area for the Board of Appeals and for the Building Inspector, it gets to be a kind of a confusing, and I doubt very many people in this room would be able to understand much of this language. In particular, we have gross floor area, when we go into bigger setbacks, the gross floor area has one definition, and under this gross floor area, we have a different definition when somebody comes in and files with Mr. Orlando to build a, build a house as far as site plan review. So in this bylaw, there are two definitions, and my amendment would be, by getting rid of the last sentence, which is, notwithstanding the preceding sentence, a calculation of gross floor area solely for determining whether site plan review is required for a residential structure shall include the gross floor area of a basement and an attic. So under gross floor area, if you're doing setbacks, you don't include subsurface basements. Under, under site plan review, though, you do. So there's two definitions, I'd like to only have one definition. What happens with this bylaw as, as it functions presently, if Mr. Orlando has, the town has two different, the same exact set of building plans come in, two houses, exact same plans, but one person puts in a basement underground, subsurface, this is, this is no walkout. You put in your basement in, and one guy has a basement that is, that is six foot 11, and the other house, exact same plan, puts in a basement that's seven foot one, that person is, that has the seven foot one, one has to do a lengthy process for a single-family home and go through a site plan review. My amendment would knock that out, and there would only be one definition of, of gross floor area. Guess that's basically it.
And I think, Mr. Orlando, the Building Inspector happens to be right here in front of us, so he can maybe further explain that.
Yes, I'm Paul Landel, the Building Inspector, and the term gross floor area is used, I think, twice in the bylaw, and it's, the number that you need to come up with is two different numbers for each section of the bylaw. And if, and it's very confusing to people that are trying to design a home or to get a permit. So if we can just delete that last section in the definition of gross floor area, it would help my job to be easier, and it would, it would help people to understand the bylaw better, I think.
I, I, I've talked with Paul Orlando about this before, and I've said to Paul, because this is a recent request, that, look, somebody, one of the planning boards, in the not-too-recent, not-too-far-past, made this distinction between making these calculations, between gross floor area for the purpose of whether site plan review needs to be done, and gross floor area just to determine what the actual gross floor area of a house is, not including the basement. Someone made that distinction for a reason, and what I said was, look, this will be the first thing on our list for a change after we have a public hearing, after we can get public input on it, maybe there's something that I'm missing, that Paul's missing, I don't know. I'm not opposed to this change, but it's, it's kind of like, do you make a change based on emotion, like this, which is technical, hard to understand? I can imagine a lot of you folks have a hard time understanding it, just having it read to you. Do you make the change based on an immediate request, or do you have a public hearing and have the board, which includes the two architects, weigh in on this? And, and it may be, you end up in the same place, but it's just the process for getting there. So that's why I would be hesitant to make this change now, but maybe later, after a public hearing, we can do it.
Isn't it great that we learn so much at these meetings? I used to think gross floor area was the living room of a frat after a party, but... all right.
Herman Lilia, 6 Bay Ridge Lane. I'm, once having been the Chair of the Planning Board, we interpreted this to expand the option of the Planning Board to review houses that came in with a living space below ground level and in the attic. It was a much larger domicile, and we wanted more control over that structure. That is the way I interpreted what the previous planning boards had in fact created, by using that language. So I vote for the retention of this as is.
All right, sir.
Alan McMillan, 18 Story Street. I listened to Mr. Orlando, and boy, that makes a heck of a lot of sense, two inches for definition. It's simple, we addressed this issue tonight, makes his job easier, makes homeowners' job easier, I'm voting for the change. Thank you.
Wait a minute, we've heard from you on this one, we haven't heard from Toby on this one. Go ahead, Toby.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Herman Lilia has pretty much covered it. It was intended to capture larger buildings, which are the subject of the site plan review, which were supposed to go through a much more thorough vetting process, that's the Planning Board, than ordinary zoning. You wouldn't simply go to the Building Inspector, who is certainly bright and clever enough to, you know, cope with two standards. And when you have a building as large as one that would qualify for site plan review, you almost certainly have on board an architect, probably lawyers, and, and, you know, God only knows what, as well, to file the plans. So the technical difficulty of filing the plans is no argument at all. What Alan McMillan says about the difference between, you know, six feet 11 inches and seven feet one, any standard that you come up with is going to be arbitrary, and somebody will fall on one side of it or another. The whole point of the site plan review was that it was going to address really large structures, that quite apart from the ordinary zoning, were going to have outsized effects on their neighbors and the town as a whole. So it makes sense, although it's unsafe to have two definitions in this place, it makes sense.
All right, anybody else who has not spoken on gross floor area? Yes, ma'am.
Monica Lawton, 11 Story Street. I just want to be a third voice with Toby and Herman Lilia on the, the intent of site plan review. I remember that, sitting in the audience through long discussions about site plan review. It was a torturous process, very controversial, but finally we came, the town came to a decision on the need to set some standards for reviewing larger structures. And in, the point was made, structures that are so large where a basement will then trigger site plan review really should be included in a site plan review process, and I don't think we should mess with that at this time.
Okay, I think we're good here. I think we've, we've kicked this around, I think we're good. If you want to make that change and remove the last sentence, you're going to press 1 or A, and if you don't, you're going to press 2 or B. It's a majority vote, and it starts now. 20% in favor, 80% opposed, 28 in favor, 112 opposed. We move on. Anything else in this definition area before we just take a vote on everything that we have left? Yes, sir?
Point of interest.
A point of interest, wait a minute, I'm still, I'm still not sure I know what that is. Hold on, Alan. Yeah, I don't think we have such a thing. We can deal with, we can, we don't have to keep all 157 people here for that. All right, let us move on. Are we ready to vote on the heck article this is? F. You've heard the motion, all those that are in favor of it, you are going to press A or 1, and if you are opposed to it, you're going to press B or 2. It requires a two-thirds vote. We're going to start now. We're getting somewhere, we've gotten through Foxtrot, we now move to Gulf. 83% in favor, 17% opposed, 120 in favor, 25 opposed. I declare that it is two-thirds or more.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article G be approved as printed in the January 18th, 2023 special town meeting warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct capitalization and typographical errors, as well as conform numerals, written numbers, and sections throughout this article to ensure correctness when amending the zoning bylaws. Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support this article.
Moved and seconded.
Okay, Article G is an existing section, there's nothing new in it, it is a non-conforming buildings and uses. The only thing that's deleted, it's, there's no real change, except the reference to a cottage colony, as I mentioned earlier, which is no longer part of our definitions, is, is removed, the reference to a cottage colony is removed from Article G. Other than that, there are no substantive changes in Article G, it's simply, you know, some, moving some paragraphs, but everything is the same, other than that one change that I mentioned, which is on page 32 of your booklet.
32 of your booklet, requires two-thirds vote. Any questions? You have heard the motion, if you are in favor of making the changes as in, on pages 32 and 33 and 34 of your voters' booklet, you're going to press 1 or A. If you are opposed, you're going to press 2 or B, starting now. It passed 95% to 5%, or 127 to 7, so that is more than two-thirds, I so declare it. We move on to Article H or Hotel, which is starting on page 35 of your voters' booklet.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article H be approved as printed in the January 18th, 2023 special town meeting warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct capitalization and typographical errors, as well as conform numerals, written numbers, and sections throughout this article to ensure correctness when amending the zoning bylaws. Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support this article.
Moved and seconded. Anybody have any questions on H for Hotel, which is 37 and 38? All right, yes. Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. A is the types of districts and establishment of districts, and I guess I want to ask town council, some of the districts are shown and some are not shown. We've got the standard districts, we don't have the overlay districts. Down below, it says, note, the several districts shall be denoted on the zoning map by the appro, and so forth, but some of the districts aren't there, the overlay districts, and also the subsidiary districts for the watershed protection overlay bylaw. And I would think that the zoning map, since it's an official part of the zoning, would have to match the text, so in this regard, it doesn't. And just that things be user-friendly, all of the relevant districts should be on the map, and they are not.
Yeah, we have, all the zoning districts are on the map, all these that are listed, and also the water supply protection overlay district is on the draft of the map, which is, unfortunately, it's printed in black and white in your, in your booklet, but it's up here, and we also have a slide of it. But all those districts are on the, on the zoning map, and the draft zoning map, which, if it's adopted, it's a draft because it has, it has the water supply protection overlay district on it, which need to be approved, so that's why it's a draft. But it's on the draft map, they are on the draft map, so that's, anyway, that's all.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Charlie Seavy, 18 Frank Street, which isn't complete on the map, by the way, but we'll talk about that later. Toby's got a point, but that isn't the point of the motion. The motion is to grant the town clerk power to make change, capitalization, typographical errors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which is exactly what the Government and Bylaws Committee did a couple of town meetings ago, when we were talking about the town bylaws. The town clerk has the power to do those, to make those changes, which is the essence of Article H, it's got nothing to do with the maps. I'm looking at page 36, so this is just duplicates.
Yeah, well, if I, if I may, I think it reads, or I know it reads, that Article H be approved, and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct typos. So H is on page 37 and 38, and it does talk about the districts, and references the zoning map. Every once in a while. All right, any other questions on this? You have heard the motion, if you are in favor, you're going to press 1 or A, and if you are opposed, you're going to press 2 or B, starting now. And if you are opposed, you're going to press two or B, starting now. And it needs a two-thirds vote. Eighty-eight percent in favor, twelve percent opposed. That is more than two-thirds. It's one hundred and fourteen to sixteen, so this passes with more than two-thirds vote. We move on to I for India, starting on forty and then goes into forty-one, and it's a lot of pages.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article I be approved as printed in the January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three special town meeting warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct capitalization and typographical errors, as well as conform numerals, written numbers, and sections throughout this article to ensure correctness when amending the zoning bylaws. Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support this article.
Could we put up the PowerPoint on our, like?
And I goes from pages forty-one to fifty. I don't know if there's still coffee. There is still coffee. That's grounds for excitement.
Okay, there are no substantive changes in Article I, the, which is the general statement relative to all districts, permitted uses in zoning districts, except in paragraph G, which is on page forty-two. And if you take a look at paragraph G, you'll see that there is a change. The N in the, under the R district is changed to a special permit zoning board of appeals. And also the language that says, provided that there is a minimum of ten thousand square feet of land area for each dwelling unit. Okay, let me just explain what this is about. Is that the, the way it reads now for a new townhouse or other multiple dwelling is that each dwelling unit must have ten thousand square feet of space. So if you have four of them, four townhouses, you must have forty thousand square feet minimum of land to build four townhouses. Follow me so far? And that's the way it's written now. What this deletion does is it changes that, but only in relation to two zoning districts. And I'll tell you why. And this is because the, under the area and dimension regulations, if you go look on page fifty-five, and this might help you, if you look on page fifty-five, you will see the minimum area square feet for a one family. And that has, in the different zoning districts, starting with SRAA, forty thousand, twenty thousand, twelve thousand, ten thousand for R, ten thousand for semi-residential, seven thousand five hundred for general, and five thousand for downtown. So by eliminating the ten thousand, minimum of ten thousand square feet per dwelling unit on page forty-two in column G, we are not, there is no effect in the SRAA, SR, RA, R, or SMR districts, because those minimum lot sizes in the schedule of area and uses are all at least ten thousand square feet. So a four, even with the amendment that we're proposing, a four-unit townhouse in an R district is still going to require forty thousand minimum square feet. In a SMR semi-residential district where it's ten thousand, it's also going to require forty thousand square feet. However, when you get to the general districts and the downtown, the minimum lot, the minimum area shrinks, because for general, the minimum lot size is seven thousand five hundred square feet, and for downtown, it's five thousand square feet. Those two districts, the minimum lot size for townhouses and multiple dwellings diminishes. So in other words, we're not making someone who's doing a, who's trying to do a townhouse unit in a general zoning district, we're not requiring that they have a minimum of ten thousand square foot per unit. We're only requiring that they have a minimum of seven thousand five hundred. And for the downtown area, we're only requiring that they have a minimum of five thousand. And these, and all of these townhouse dwellings or multiple dwellings require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So does everyone understand that? It's, it's only affecting really two of the most dense districts, because what we're trying to do is expand the ability to create housing in the town of Rockport, and to, in the downtown or general district, to require forty thousand square feet for four townhouses is basically an impossibility. So that's, that's what that's all about. And that's the only change in this, in this Article I. Yeah, I. Okay? That's it.
Anything from any of our building people? All right, let's hear from the crowd.
Mr. Moderator, Charles Peterman, twenty-two Pleasant Street. Unfortunately, the map on page ninety-five or ninety-six is almost impossible to read. Could we please have the zoning map displayed prominently and the different colors pointed out, so everyone has a general idea of what the zoning areas are and where they're effective? It's difficult to read from this distance unless somebody stands up and presents that.
We have it, and if you want to come by, we can, right, it's right there? Yeah, feel free to come by. We do the best we can with the resources we have available.
Would it be possible to have it presented and just said, this color is this?
If you want to come up and take a look at it, or if you want to show it around?
You want me to come over there and present it to you?
That's fine.
Or do you want to come up and look at it?
I'm not trying to be difficult. We just, it's here, it's.
Yeah, you can't project it on a screen, because you won't be able to see it. It's just the technology that we have.
We're trying to get it up on the screen also. I'll let you know when it's on the screen. Okay, we'll, as, as people are looking, let's just keep it down. We've got it on the screen now. Gentlemen? Gentlemen? It's on the screen, if you want to look there as well. Either you're welcome to look either place. All right, we've got to keep going, though, and we see a person on the microphone. Go ahead, ma'am.
Laura Halliwell, thirty-seven High Street. I am still totally confused. I thought I got that the point was to eliminate the per unit, so that, for example, in area R, you might be able to have a townhouse without forty thousand square feet. But then I got totally lost, because I just don't understand at all what you're trying to tell me.
Okay, each unit is still going to require the minimum lot size for the district.
But do you mean?
No, let's not go back and forth, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get to your question. Do you want to elaborate a little bit more on that, perhaps? Rather than have a conversation back and forth, but can you just eliminate?
Each unit, a, a townhouse unit is not exempt from the area and dimensional regulations. It requires the same minimum lot size as any other single-family home in, or at least a conglomeration of a lot. In other words, you could have forty thousand square feet, you might be able to put the townhouses together, but you're going to have forty thousand square feet, okay? It, it doesn't eliminate that requirement. It just eliminates it so for the more dense districts, which is the general and the downtown, you don't have a ten thousand square foot minimum size per townhouse unit. You only have in one case, seven thousand five hundred, and in the other case, five thousand.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Michaela Tobin, twenty-four Beach Street. I am not addressing what we are voting on. I am addressing the way you, Mr. Moderator, addressed us. Let's hear from the crowd, really. We are the voting citizens. We are not the crowd. So please amend the way you address us. Thank you.
Andrea Ritchie, one Herndon Avenue. Just to clarify, do you mean that one unit in downtown currently requires five thousand square feet? Are you saying that four units will require five thousand or twenty thousand downtown?
No, four, four units will require twenty.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Correct. Twenty thousand. Each unit has to have its own five thousand square feet. Each unit has to have at least five thousand square feet.
Okay, let's hear from the gentleman that looks like Toby, then we'll hear from you.
Toby Arsenean, ninety-five Granite Street. I found Jason Shaw's explanations more confusing than helpful. I don't see anything about downtown districts, so seven thousand or five thousand square feet, where I'm looking at G on page forty-two. I mean, it just isn't there. How that gets dragged into it and why that's relevant, I don't see. I have an amendment to offer.
Well, first of all, look on page fifty-five.
No, I can't. I'll drop the papers. For Article I, Section V, G, uses, I move to retain the words, provided that there is a minimum of ten thousand, parentheses, ten thousand, square feet of land for every, for each dwelling unit. Amended annual town meeting four, nine, two thousand and twelve. And restore the N, meaning not permitted, in the column for residential district R. That's all on page forty-two. Now, what the planning board is up to basically is gutting the zoning code. They want more, more, more. They bought the state's line, hook line, and sinker, courtesy of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. You'll be told you need housing, more housing and more housing. Indeed, there is a housing crisis, and it's not up to our zoning code to solve it. You're told we need affordable housing. Indeed, we do, and you're not going to get it this way. Anything that is built, you know, will cost a fortune, market rate. Property here now costs a fortune, building materials, ditto. So if you're hoping for affordable housing, that's, you know, delusional is the only word for it. This is, you know, aside from, from the quality of life, jamming things in closer and closer, you know, which does not make for happy neighbors, there's also the question, when you add additional units, we're slithering down the hill at a great rate after last May, of providing the necessary town services. Those are sewer and water. The DPW commissioners need to tell the meeting, or what's left of it, where we stand with their latest survey. That's the Tetra Tech survey. The, the news on both the water and the sewer is not good. And the statements that were made by the DPW last May were accurate but not helpful, that we had to go ahead with the sewer improvements, whether or not the zoning changes went forward. But if you add a great many more households to the existing sewer system, the day of disaster comes closer and closer. And the day of disaster is the day that we're forced to build a new sewage treatment plant. Now, there aren't any solid figures for that. The figure that was battered around, not a good figure, a year before the Wuhan flu broke out, was thirty-five million dollars. Just imagine what that figure might be now. And no, I can't substantiate the figure. And no, you don't know, want to know what it would feel like to be run over by a Mack truck. Better not to know. Better not to go there. If you'd rather be spared more and more housing in inappropriate places, please vote for the amendment.
Okay, so as we have many times here this evening, we're now switching gears. We're only dealing with an amendment to this Article I, which will require a majority vote, which, if you look at forty-two on your voters' booklet. Wait, wait, let me finish, please. If you go on page forty-two of the voters' booklet, Toby, I believe, wants to restore that language that says, provided there is a minimum of ten thousand square feet of land for each dwelling unit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And he wants on the R district to restore the N. And so we'll hear from everybody. We'll hear from the gentleman in the back, then we'll hear from you, Herm. Yes, sir?
Me or?
Yes, you, you.
Okay, John Kulikowski, five Phillips Avenue. Again, it's just a way of getting more development here in Rockport, and it's pretty crowded in those areas anyway, and this includes Pigeon Cove. The map should be very clear to everybody, which it is not, and I think you're really asking for people to vote on something that they don't really know about. Even looking at it closely is difficult to figure out where the areas are. So any new development is going to create a lot more stress on all our infrastructure, our schools and so forth, and I don't see the reason for it. We do not have the obligation to furnish more units, no matter what the state says. We have an obligation to each other to live in a good community and support each other and no one else. I'm all for people moving in and moving out, but appropriately. And I think the zoning is fine the way it is. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Okay, Herm.
Well, I'll comment on the last comments of the previous speaker first, and that is, I will say, as I've said before, all of you who have moved in here have an obligation to those who grew up in town and to help them find housing. That's the first. The other, you have an obligation. The other is that with regard to what is being proposed here, the effort is to try again with some small step to increase available housing. It's not the solution, as Toby. It's not the solution, as Toby might have described it, it is only part of the answer. So look upon it as one step. Thank you.
If you want to be called upon, just get behind the old microphone and we will hear from you. Again, people who have not spoken, so just get behind the old microphone if you would like to speak, because it's really kind of hard to see you all in the periphery sometime. Okay, speaking on the amendment, Charlie, go ahead.
With respect, thank you, Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. With regards to increasing our housing stock, I'd like to note our current water supply. Currently on Cape Pond, we're down by more than what looks like 50%. I wish we could show you some photographs of what the shoreline of Cape Pond looks like right now. Stones that used to barely tip out of the water during the dry season are not simply fully exposed, they are fully dry and the water line is an easy five to 10 feet away from them. The formerly defined wetlands at the access road are now also thoroughly exposed as mud flats. We are very low on available water, and the amount of snow we've received over this winter is not looking strong for replenishment. With regards to opening up more housing stock by amending our zoning laws, I would invite you to consider how long you'd like to be in the shower. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Denise Donnelly, 72 Pigeon Hill Street. From my perspective, this is a moment of truth for this community. Housing should not be a luxury, whether you grew up here or not, whether you approve of new people moving in or not, housing should not be a luxury, and at the moment, it has become a luxury. We have a problem facing us with respect to a commodity, which is housing. The scarcity of housing has an effect on the price, as it does with any scarcity. We have before us one opportunity, one step, as Herm said, to start to make some progress in addressing this problem. We can either vote in favor of this amendment to allow for more housing, or we can vote no, in which case, we are not in favor of more affordable housing. It's as simple as that. With respect to wastewater treatment capacity and water, I think it's possible for us to do more than one thing at a time. We should, yes, be addressing those problems, but it doesn't have to be in a linear fashion. I think we're all smart enough to be able to try to address all of those problems at the same time. We have already told Gloucester that we are willing to engage in a conversation they invited us to regarding participating in their $100 million wastewater treatment facility. What that means, we don't know yet, but we understand we have an issue and we are going to discuss that with them. So I say, vote on this amendment, vote in favor, excuse me, vote in favor of this article, against this amendment, and start to take some action to do something about affordable housing in this town. Thank you.
All right, you've heard the motion, which is to amend Article I by making the changes that we discussed already on page 42. So if you are going to vote yes, you are going to vote to amend it, per Toby's amendment, and if you vote no, you are not going to amend it. Any questions on it? Sure. If you vote yes, you are going to amend...
Could you read it again, please?
You are going to amend G by reinstating the text that is crossed out, which is Toby's amendment, to reinstate that text and to reinstate the little N in the residential zoning district. And if you vote against the amendment, you're not going to make those changes. Any questions now on that? Questions on that, yes? Only if you have a question on what that means. Okay.
I do, I, so...
Please just...
I'm sorry, Dan Waters, 71 Eden Road. So just so I'm clear, Jason, between Jason and Toby on this, so this is going to do two, if we do what Toby says, we're going to both restore the 10,000, well, the 10,000's already there, but we're going to keep the ban in residential section R, right? And, but, are we also requiring 10,000 square feet in the general and in the downtown? We're doing both of those things, right?
Right, the way I understand it, if you vote...
Get, on the mic, please.
The way I understand it, if you vote for the proposed amendment, this isn't for, this isn't on the article, this is on the proposed amendment that's been made by Mr. Arsenian. If you vote in favor of that amendment, you're voting to restore the deleted language from the article, which will mean it's exactly, it will remain like it is today, which is 10,000 square feet in every district in the town, okay? That's if you vote for the proposed amendment. If you are against the proposed amendment, you're saying, don't amend, we're against the amendment, but you still have to have a second vote on the article.
Of course.
But then there's a second vote, then, after that, on the article itself. So this is, this is just on the amendment.
Right, it's, we, I don't know if you guys see, the attendees see a trend, but we're doing the same thing on each of these. If there's an amendment, we're voting on the amendment, and the amendment either fails or passes, and then eventually, once we go through all the amendments, we get to the main article. Always the same. So now we have an amendment to Article I that refers to G on page 42, and restores that deleted language, and restores the word N, or the letter N, for the R district. Everyone see that? Okay. So if you are going to vote for that amendment, you are going to vote A, and if you are against that amendment, you're going to vote B, starting now. Okay, that amendment failed. 37% in favor, 63% opposed, 60, 52, excuse me, 52 in favor, 90 opposed. Now we're continuing to talk about Article I without that amendment. Anyone have any further discussion on that article, who has not spoken yet on that article? All right, anyone want to speak on that article? Who has spoken on that article? Just get behind the microphone and we'll hear from you. Okay, yes, sir.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. On the last page, we can't change this because it's not altered, but what we have here is simply wrong, it's inaccurate. The last definition reads accessory uses normally associated with a one-family detached dwelling, provided that such accessory uses are not detrimental to a residential neighborhood. And under G, which is the general district, the only general district we have left is Pigeon Cove and the vicinity, it says NA, which I take it means not applicable, and that is simply not accurate. Single residences are a permitted use in the general district, so the NA is simply wrong. And beyond that, you can say that that's a quibble, but it's not. Beyond that, accessory uses are nowhere defined, and we, the town of Rockport, the town came to all sorts of grief. Someone who moved here, who the moderator, not wishing to name, referred to as Voldemort, had the notion that landing a helicopter on the backyard was an accessory use. So really, not to make some attempt at defining accessory uses is, you know, a failure of a major sort. So that definition needs to be corrected, both for the general district, and it needs to be expanded. It's a mess.
Thank you, Malfoy.
Heath Ritchie, 1 Woodbury Hill. I am looking at the changes here, I think there's the addition of the SPPB, Structure Permitted by a Grant of Special Permit by the Planning Board. I'm having trouble finding where that's referred to in the table of uses, so that, it's hard to read them all. And then my second observation is that, let's see, under commercial and industrial uses, V subsection G, contractor, storage and repair facilities. For the SMR district, the value in the box is SP, but that doesn't appear to have any meaning anymore, so I was wondering if I could get a clarification about what that's about.
And I would like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Jacob and the sound crew. I can hear wonderfully this meeting, and this is a very tough room, so thank you. But then I would ask, if you are speaking on any of these with multiple pages, just try to, you know, give us the page number and the section so we can easily find where you're talking. You don't need to do that now, but in the future. And we'll hear from Jason on this, I guess?
I don't know what I'm hearing from me on what. I don't really get it.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions, comments on this section I, before we take a vote?
Only thing I can say, one other thing, is that, you know, the planning board doesn't get everything perfect all the time, and we do find things as we go along through this zoning bylaw that need to be changed. We might not get them all at once, but we get to them eventually. You know, we are volunteers, we don't have a staff except for a secretary. So it sometimes takes us a little longer to correct everything, but we're working on it, and we're moving forward, and I think that's a good thing. So, you know, we're not perfect. Thank you.
All right, we have several people there. Yes, ma'am. Seven minutes to the end of coffee, as we know it.
Thank you. I am not sure, but I think I just heard the moderator address one of our citizens as, "Thank you, Malfoy."
No, I don't think you heard that.
I am glad. I would like to thank everybody here for their volunteering, including Toby. I don't know his... I don't know his last name, but I know it's not Malfoy. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Evans, 77 High Street. And I'm looking at page 48, number E, and it seems to me that one really organic, easy way to kind of get affordable housing going in this town would be to change those six contiguous months for minimum rental for an ADU to 12 months, and then we could bring families in and people who want to live here year-round without, you know, any new construction, and we can start doing that right away. And I just would like to propose that as an alternative to the six months that is now under E on page 48.
Yeah, that one's not before us, but I'm sure the planning board will listen to that and they'll write it down for next time. Anything else?
Yes, hi there. My name is Soula Stephanopoulos, I live at 26 King Street, and I'm trying to just totally, fully understand Article I, the last part. So for, if I wanted to turn our house into a four, a four-unit dwelling, I would need 40 thou, I would need to just, just get 40,000 square feet. Is that right? I'm just reading Article I. I'm just there with what's on the screen. So, yeah, Mr. Shaw, can you just explain what that last part says? The lot square footage for each unit would be the same square footage as what is in the schedule of area and dimensions in Section 6.
That's correct, that's correct.
Right, and what is that for, for the R district?
It's 10,000 square feet.
Okay, so if I want to turn...
We're not going to have back and forth...
You know, I mean, I don't know what this is about, it's, I think you understand it.
No, I just want to, you know, I want to understand the level of density that's affecting my neighborhood and not your neighborhood. So I'm trying to understand what it is we're talking about here. I'm all for density, but I'm just trying to visualize, because right now, in the R district, the lots are fairly small, there's nothing that's like 40,000 square feet. So, right, so what, so you're saying, you just said earlier that it's not really possible right now to do that kind of development. So what do you have in mind? What, what, you know, how...
I think you have a question that may be best addressed at sidebar, so if you guys want to go and, you want to come down and he can talk about it, but...
I'm sure we don't need to have a conversation in front of everybody...
Yes, we do, actually, this is one important issue, because...
Excuse me, we don't need to have a conversation in front of everybody, we can have it on a sidebar, as the moderator has suggested.
Well, I'm concerned because this information is not clearly presented.
Please, ma'am.
Yeah, we can have those conversations, but I think it's, I think it's been addressed already, and, yeah. You want to have a conversation about this?
Well, no, it's kind of concerning to me because you said you need 40,000 square feet to put four units in, and that's not possible right now in our district, even if we wanted to do that. So it's concerning because how is that going to happen? Do developers come in and offer people to buy their lots and houses?
You know, I can't, I can't deal...
And tear them down?
Yeah, that's beyond the scope of what we can discuss. If there happened to have, if... Ma'am, we have to move on.
Okay.
He'll be glad? No, no.
We don't want our houses torn down, we're not historic...
No! Ma'am!
Sorry, thank you.
If, he will talk to you on sidebar, but we have to move on. Yes, please.
Laurie McKenna, 31 High Street. I have a similar question. I'm in R, I have a, our lot is 10,300 square feet, I have a single-family home. If I want to make it into a two-unit townhouse, do I need 20,000, or can I do it with my 10,300-square-foot lot? It's just not clear, looking at this definition in G, and then flipping over to the page that has the requirements. So my question is very, very clear. I'm in R, I have 10,300 square feet, can I put a two-unit townhouse on that, or do I need 20,000?
Mr. Orlando?
To answer your question, if you have a, an existing building, and you're going to convert it to two units in that district, you could do it by special permit with 10,000 square feet of area. If you wanted to put a brand-new building on there, then you will need to have... If the area dimension gets changed in a couple of articles from now, you will also need a special permit, so you could do that with 10,000 square feet by special permit. And it still would require a public hearing in front of the zoning board of appeals. So it's not something that you could just do by right.
Yes, ma'am.
Linda Medits, 98 Main Street. I am requesting that you apologize to the woman who spoke before the last speaker for shouting no at her. She was asking an earnest, honest, authentic question. Some of you up in the front are struggling to understand and explain this, you can't even provide a legible map. You can't even provide a legible map. And people are concerned about what this all means with the future of their property. I think it was very rude the way she was treated, and I'm requesting an apology. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Alan Bastelli, 57 Phillips Avenue. I think the Planning Board's done a great job on this. I commend them on Article I. Last two speakers, please look at page 42. I don't want to get into it. I'm not going to talk about it. Please look at page 42, number F, and you will find all your answers. And there's many resources. There's the board of appeals, there's building inspector, planning board, who can explain what number F on page 42 means.
Monica Lawton, 11 Story Street. I thought I understood at the beginning. It was stated pretty clearly that you needed 10,000 square feet per dwelling unit, and now it appears that you don't. If I understand the building inspector correctly, you only need 10,000 square feet to put up your townhouse of two units. So which is it? We do need clarification on that.
A townhouse is a standalone dwelling. It's not accessory dwelling. It's not dividing something into an apartment. It's, a townhouse is a standalone dwelling. A lot of times they have common, will have a common wall, but that's what a townhouse is. And the reason the 10,000-square-foot requirement, that the amendment that was eliminated required that throughout all the districts and didn't, but what we're trying to do is allow for less square footage in the general and the downtown district. That's our understanding of the way this is written. So that's what, that's basically why we want to eliminate it. It's not going to change anything else in the zoning, in the zoning other than for those two districts. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Jamie Madea, 2 Holbrook Court. The middle of that blue district called the R district. To give you all context, when you drive past the train station, there's that beautiful granite bank at the head of King Street. Across from it is the Sandy Bay Historical Society. Keep going down King Street and you pass Paula Cole's house. Go a little bit further and on the right, you pass Andrew Stanton's house. Keep going and you pass the old Linden Tree Inn, where this nice woman and her husband have been renovating themselves internally instead of tearing it down. You continue past my house, past the Andersons, who've lived here for three generations, and you end up at Front Beach. I give you that context because I, as a land use professor, am confused. When this article came up, I heard our very hard-working Planning Board chair say, "It's nothing. It's no big deal. The only thing of any change is G." But then I heard the esteemed Denise Donnelly, select person, say, "If you ever want any affordable housing, want any housing, we have to do our part in housing. You have to vote for this." These are two very different perspectives. So my perspective is, I cannot see clearly that this is nothing. What I see is a very core part of Rockport being provided with every incentive for developers to build four units out of what is currently a single-family house. I don't like that. I don't want that. And I know developers build eventually to whatever is allowed by zoning, and four units per an existing lot is too much in that area. Thank you very much.
I sense that you are ready to vote.
Four units for an existing lot where each unit meets the minimum square footage requirement. Okay? That's what it's, that's what this is about.
You've heard the motion, requires a two-thirds vote. If you want to vote for it, you're going to press 1 or A. If you don't want to vote for it, you're going to press 2 or B. Ready? Motion fails. It is, appears to be 50-50. 68-69. Okay, we move on. So that was I. We move on to J.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article J be approved as printed in the January 18th, 2023 special town meeting warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to correct capitalization and topographical errors, as well as conform numerals, written numbers, and sections throughout this article to ensure correctness when amending the zoning bylaws. Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support this article.
This has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Okay. Let's look at Article J. I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion about Article J. Article J does two things of significance. Number one, on page 54, it eliminates the paragraph regarding retail and commercial uses. The reason it eliminates that is really that is not a zoning provision. That is a building code provision, or it's not a building code provision. It's a provision that belongs in a Massachusetts building code, which covers things like how many restrooms are located in a building. The minimum floor area devoted to retail space and back rooms shall be 400 square foot per unit. This is all interior space in a building. Zoning does not cover interior spaces. It covers uses in terms of, is it being used for residential, commercial, but it doesn't govern how a commercial use is used inside. It doesn't govern many of the things that are covered by this, but the Massachusetts building code does. So that has been eliminated because it just doesn't apply to what we're talking about in the zoning bylaw. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. The other thing that this does is reduces the lot size for two family units, and this is, this is part of the goal, to incrementally increase the housing stock in the town of Rockport, where the median home price is now over $800,000. I'm going to get a drink of water. In this provision, the, what is allowed is that a two-family house is allowed, and this is on page 55, a two-family house is allowed on a 10,000-square-foot lot. Right now, the requirement is 15,000 square feet. It's allowed on a 10,000-square lot with the condition that the setbacks are the same as for a single family. All front, rear, and side yard setbacks are the same as they are for a single family. The 25% maximum lot coverage is the same as a single family. And the number of allowable stories is the same as a single family. But this change is important if the town is going to comply with the Housing Choice Initiative started by the Commonwealth two years ago, providing more affordable housing. Without this change, Rockport will not be able to show, in the time required, that its changes is zoning to allow a minimum of 32 acres of multifamily housing zoning within half-mile radius of the train station. This does not require that anybody build anything or tear down anything or do anything to their property, but it does allow for a two-family structure to be built in the R zone, which is within the half-mile radius of the train station. All the other requirements have to be met, and that's pretty much it. If we're going to comply, if we're going to provide housing in accordance with the Housing Choice Initiative, this needs to be done. And if we're not, then, then this won't get done. And if we don't do it in the future, Rockport, in addition, will, in addition to not having the more affordable housing, will also not be entitled to seek millions of dollars of grants for development and housing for the future. And that's, that's the law right now. We will not be able to do that. So that's kind of, that's really the choice here. You know, if you want more affordable housing, if you want to start going down that road, this is the incremental kind of change that we need to make. That's it. It's a stark choice, really. Thank you.
You've heard the motion? Any discussion? Please, if you want to discuss, ma'am, we'll go right to the microphone.
Nancy Winslow, 127 Main. It's a simple question. I understand the importance of this for grant, but what are they going to look like? Are we going to have a bunch of two-family housing in residential that now has single I don't mind a single family that's been split and you can't tell, but I'm concerned about them looking bad.
Next. Thank you.
Nathan Ives, 199 Noah Avenue. I wholeheartedly support this measure and hope that we'll pass it. It is high time we take some incremental steps to bring affordable housing to Rockport. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Michael Davis, 1 King Street Court. I also support Article J. I, what I, what I don't understand, having, you know, living in the R zoning district, what people are afraid of. There are many, many two- and four-family houses currently in the R district. Most of them are single, I imagine were originally single-family houses, but they're all over the place. And I know almost none of them have more than 10,000 square feet. Most of them have less. So I, I just, to me, this is just codifying what is already the reality in the R district. So I support this Article J. Thank you.
If you want to speak, just get, get behind the present speaker and get in line. We'll hear from you all.
Barbara Kaplan, 4 Ocean Avenue, Rockport. I fully support this article. Looks, are the looks of multifamily housing going to take away from the beauty of the beach and our community? I don't think so. I think they're going to provide housing for more people. We're so privileged and lucky to live in the homes we do, but we need to start sharing our community if we want a vibrant community where our children can stay in our local schools and not have to go out to a regional school because people, our community is shrinking so because nobody can afford to live here. What is it? How an apartment is going to look? How a multi- or semi-attached housing is going to look? They can be just as beautiful as our homes. We need to consider providing housing for people so they can share in the bounty of Rockport.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. I move to retain the 15,000-square-foot requirement for two-family in the residential zone. Numbers of people have spoken about affordable housing. It's an issue that clearly strikes people's hearts. It resonates. All of this that we're talking about is private property, and the people who build the housing or might build the housing, if the authorization is given by the town meeting, are not motivated by philanthropy or charity. Probably most of them could not afford to be if they wanted to. So when we keep hearing about affordable housing, we're deluding ourselves. And the state's initiative that Jason Shaw refers to, he was before the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board now, less than two weeks ago, their last meeting, explaining about the state's exactions. The state wants 600, and he can correct me, something like 57 units. That, of course, would include, I shouldn't say, of course, would include what we authorized at the train station. I believe he said 120. I thought it was 140 or more. But anyway, all of this in a small area that is already putting up with the noise and unpleasantness of the trains, and it's notable. It's easy to be kind and generous if you're not the person footing the bill. None of the members of the Planning Board live anywhere in the vicinity. Either the people who launched it to begin with or those who are on it now. So they're being charitable, if you want to call it charitable, I wouldn't, at somebody else's expense. And there will be expenses. It's not affordable housing, and it will all need water and sewer if any of it is built, and it will cost a fortune that we don't have. The DPW didn't step forward when I asked and explained about the Tetra Tech study. Really, they owe it to the voters to do that. We need to defend our interests, and we're not going to solve the state's housing crisis. The state is not interested in affordable housing. They are merely greasing the skids for developers.
As has happened in more, on more than one occasion, we are now switching gears. We're only talking about an amendment to Article J, which will require a majority vote. And that, if I have it correctly, is to change the area square feet, two-family, from 10,000 back to 15,000 in the residential district. Do I have that correct?
That's correct. What was there before?
Okay. So now that's all we're going to talk about until we resolve that. Anybody want to talk about just that amendment? I don't want to hear about anything else from any of the attendees. All right. You have heard the motion.
Wait, the people are here. I'm not speaking on this. I'm just waiting.
There's nobody approaching the microphone. If you want to, okay, there you go. If you want to talk about this amendment, approach the microphone. Yes, please.
Yes, Bill Tobin, 24 Beach Street. Well, by having the R zone near the MBTA, the only one affected that evidently the state feels that if you live near a train station, you care more than the whole town about affordable housing. Isn't that... Isn't that cute? Wrong. We all care in this room about affordable housing. I recommend we accept Toby's motion because the entire town needs to come to this party that the MBTA and the state has graciously granted us. So please, vote for Toby. He's not denying, and no one in this room is denying, affordable housing. And he talks about a pipe dream. You know what's interesting? When the state did this, they sent a carrot to us and said, "We'll give you lots of money." Jason somehow says 2 million. I don't know where he got that figure. Maybe he can answer that later. However, the stick was, if our zone doesn't accept this, then no one gets any money for affordable housing. So if the state really wants to do this, every one of us in this room, every zone in Rockport should support affordable housing. And certainly, we have lots that far exceed 10,000. Unfortunately, they're not in the R-zone. And you all in this room know where they are. And we all should participate. What a nonsensical thing this is, to pick on one zone. If you want to talk about democracy, that's not it. Everyone together. You're pitting us against each other. Incorrect. We want more democracy. And by the way, Mr. Moderator, as a point of order, do I have a second? From anyone, a point of order for this moderator tonight? Anyone second me? The point of order is this. We are a legislative body. We are the legislatures. We are not just your citizens or your gang. I want to be directed and addressed as a legislator. That's what we are. And it's in the bylaws already. So let's call us what we are. We vote the money here, and everybody in this room knows it. Thank you very much for your time.
After this gentleman, then. Yes?
Charlie CV, 18 Frank Street. Look, this, this whole business about the MBTA zone and all that is completely theoretical because there are so many barriers, not the least of which is that a great deal of that land is privately owned. There are very noisy trains there. Nobody's going to build 1,200 units or whatever somebody said on, on social media down there. The fact is that if we do not change from 15,000 to 10,000, we're going to annoy the state. It makes no difference to us. There is not, there is no mandate that we suddenly start building stuff down there or converting houses. You know, God, help me, quoting Republicans. The market will take care of that. And it's simply not going to happen. But if we annoy the state, we're cutting ourselves off from state money. I think Jason made that statement pretty clearly. So, yeah, in one sense, it's silly. In another sense, I think the whole thing is a dead issue because we're way too far from Boston. I don't know if anybody saw the prices I posted on, on social media for what it costs for a monthly pass. This, this has no effect here. We're too far away, and all we're going to do is annoy a source of a lot of money. So let's just go ahead and change it to 10,000 feet. It isn't really going to change anything.
Yes, sir.
Yes, the MBTA overlay is a, a way of giving up control of that area of the Rockport citizens to the railroad MBTA. In other words, we'd have no say in the area at all. That would, that's the definition of the MBTA overlay. Second of all, it is actually illegal to offer funds only if you do something to a town. That's technically illegal. And they're just trying to browbeat the town into submission to give up their rights of their zoning jurisdictions over the town. And that's what that is about. So there's a lot of questions about this. Just changing this may not have any effect, like my gentleman, gentleman before me said. But then again, it may. And enough money comes in, and it could affect the town tremendously. After all, the star markets have been bought up, changed hands. For those people who don't know, it shores, depending on the supermarket that you're familiar with. But that's changed hands, and other properties changed hands. So it's all for more development in Gloucester, and I suspect it would be the same thing in Rockport. That's all I got to say. So I'm against this rezoning. I think you should say the 15,000-square-feet area should remain intact to prevent the MBTA from bullying their way into our town and controlling part of our town. That's all I got to say.
Okay, Mr. Brackett.
Ross Brackett, 27 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to challenge the quorum.
Okay. All right, let's get some counters. Same counters, if you're still here. We need three people to count who's here. Fellow legislators, we are below the quorum of 150, so we cannot continue this meeting. So the rest of these items are moved right now to the annual town meeting, which is April 1st. Have a great evening.